We're streaming to YouTube, ready when you are.
Okay. Call this meeting of the Seward City Council to order. It is Monday, October 13th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Chief Tyner, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for tonight's meeting. Warner is excused. Barnwell?
Here.
Wells?
Here.
Kreitz?
Here.
Finch is excused. Osenga?
Here.
And Mayor McClure?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Oddly, tonight, we have no proclamations or awards. So we'll move on to citizen comments on any subject except items scheduled for public hearing. There are a total of five public hearing items. So the bulk of what we're doing is public hearing, and you'll get a chance to speak to those at that time. But in this particular section, you get three minutes to talk on any subject you want to talk on. And there's a total of 36 minutes for this. And there is a sign-up sheet. We'll go in order off of that, and then I'll take hand raises if there's anyone else. And when you come up, there's a chair there with a mic. We need you to give your name and whether you live inside or outside the city limits. Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed up?
Nobody has signed in to speak.
Well, gee. Okay, does anyone want to speak at this time? Come on up.
Hi, yes, my name is Shane Hand, within city limits. I'm here tonight to represent and representing the Seward Public Employees Association as their elected president. I would just want to speak to the fact that I want to express my appreciation for administration during the negotiation process in which we have, tonight, will be presenting a new updated collective bar agreement, and hopefully the council will be able to approve that tonight. I just want to also express the importance of the work, of the, express to council the importance of considering the work and recommendation of administration and Seward Public Employees Association and expect this and approve this proposed CBA. The CBA is, it's a good building block that administration and the Seward Public Employees Association have worked towards together to address some of the more, some of the most hot topics here locally and statewide as to retention and recruitment. I think it's an important building block as far as encouraging this, you know, this conversation between administration and the employees that they employ. And it feels good as a representative of the collective bar agreement to have a little say-so in that, and also to feel very much supported in that as well. So and I, through my trainings and whatever, through other union organizations and everything, I realize that that's not always the case. So I would always, I appreciate administration working with us on that, and I would hope that council would also echo their efforts to work with us on that. And I think more importantly, you know, the CBA closes a gap when it comes to, you know, addressing, you know, whether it's affordability, continuing education, it's just, all it is is it sort of nurtures a good employment environment, employable environment within the city Seward. And again, it goes back to retention and recruitment. And, you know, as times come and go, it's all about trying to recruit that next generation of people that are going to be Sewardites, and how long are they going to be here and everything. So it's, we all, obviously, it's a very big transaction or transition that the state is going through, not just, or the borough. You go state, you go down the peninsula, and you come right down to here in Seward. And it's a big transitional period, and I think there's a lot of, like, moving parts. And I think it's very important to encourage the next generation. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. I'd ask for a motion to approve in a second, please.
I'm moved for the approval of tonight's agenda and consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any changes anyone would like to make? I have one. I would like to put in new business C, number one, the certification of the results of the October 7th election. I'd like to place that on consent, please, if there's no objection. By putting something on consent, that means when we vote on the consent agenda, those items have passed without any hoopla. Any other changes? Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Voting on the approval of tonight's agenda and consent agenda as amended. Osenga?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
Your agenda and consent agenda have been approved, and on the consent agenda were the September 22nd, 2025, City Council meeting minutes. Resolution 2025-099, recommending Kenai Peninsula Borough approval of the revised preliminary plat of the property located at 3207 Sorrel Road, creating Spring Creek replat, and to certify the results of the October 7th, 2025, regular municipal election.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us down to city manager report. Madam City Manager, you'll find this on page 24 of the packet if you want to look at it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One thing I would like to highlight in the city manager report tonight is some upcoming community development, planning and zoning meetings. On Tuesday, October 21st, we have a really exciting work session topic, which is a comprehensive plan, public engagement session. And if you look at page 200-ish, 198 of the packet tonight, we have a really detailed analysis of our comprehensive plan surveys, and this is kind of taking that into the next step so you can engage with the Planning and Zoning Commission and Community Development offices about that survey on Tuesday, October 21st. And there will be pizza. So if you would like free pizza and talking about the comprehensive plan, that's a perfect night for you. And then I believe Deputy City Manager Jason Bickling has something he would like to add as well.
Yeah, I did want to give, we do have a Jesse Home update finally. So DEC has kind of given our engineers a path forward on what they're going to require. And so on Friday, October 24th, they will be, the engineers will be up there doing borehole site testing to figure out the depth to ground wire and giving them the information that DEC has asked for, which is good. So things are moving again. And then I'll keep you updated as to what we hear back from that.
Is there any estimate of how long it would take to hear back?
Uh, no, unfortunately. I would like to be able to give that, but I could not be accurate with it.
That was the city attorney. He jumped the gun on the.
Oh, well, yes, we have eager attorneys always. That's all you got?
Yeah, that's all for now.
Oh, wow. Any questions for either of these two manager types? Okay, seeing none, we have a city clerk report, and there is a laydown involved with that, too. Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, thank you. My report in the packet is just a shout-out and a big thank you to everyone involved in the local election that was held here. It's just a huge team effort from start to finish, and the results were posted the day after the packet was released, so that's why they were laid down after the canvas board met and did their work with the hand-counting of the absentee ballots. And one shout-out that I'd like to give that wasn't mentioned is Ed and Liza, who made that really neat countdown sign that's on the boardwalk, and they maintain it daily with flipping the numbers. So the countdown, it's a pretty cool sign.
Okay. The, a question. The canvas, I was here watching because I'm fascinated by that. Is that on YouTube still? I mean, does that just stay up there on the city? For government students, that might be a thing to watch. You don't have to watch the whole thing, but it's when, after the election, several days after, there's a counting of all of the early voting ballots and the question ballots and things like that, absentees, and how they open them. And it's very thorough and very interesting, I find, but, you know, anyway. You might get extra points if you watch that, is what I'm thinking. It's more fun than having a picture taken with me, so. Any questions for the clerk? Okay, we, I believe, could have our city attorney report. Is he, is, it's Rob? Who's on?
It's Rob Palmer calling in from Juneau.
Okay. Rob, are you there? Or not? Maybe you scared him off.
Do another sound check, Rob.
This is why we have live attorneys. You'll find the report on page 40 if you want to read it while we're trying to. We'll get there.
All right, try again, Rob.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes. Yeah, Rob.
Okay, great.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for being a little early on that one. Just highlight a few items in the third packet for us. One at the top is the seafood processing facility transition that project closed on Friday, so Pacific Seafood and Polar Seafood has completed their project documents, and Pacific Seafood is starting the process of moving over to the SPIC. And the other item I'll highlight is we've done a lot of work lately with the electric utility, and I think some of the work, you started to see progress through some public meetings, and there's more work to be done about the governance of the body, but we're working with administration through it. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Rob? Boy, no questions. Thorough report, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, we have two presentations tonight. The first is City of Seward Information Technology Department presentation. We've been going through departments and getting presentations, and this is their turn now, so we'll see what they come up with.
Thank you, guys, for having me in. So I'm just going to give a little kind of overview of our department and kind of what we do, and then this is also Cyber Security Awareness Month, so I'll have a slide at the end, just some short tips there, so. About our department, we're a team of three, myself, Dustin, I'm the IT director. I've been with the city since 2019. Also have Josh, he's our senior IT technician. He's been with the city since 2007. And then George, a lot of you guys know George, he's our IT technician. He's been with the city since 2014. And then the mission of our department is we provide a secure, stable, and robust network and data center to support city staff in their mission to serve the citizens of Seward. I like to just basically say our job is to make sure all the other departments have the tools that they need to do their job. So that's kind of our big focus. And then core services, another thing I'll say to vendors a lot when they ask us, you know, they'll always ask, hey, what do you do? What's your department do? One of the jokes is if it plugs in, we probably support it, whether we want to or not, so. And in the city, that can be quite a few things. Network infrastructure, both city and police department networks, you know, we're helping with the dispatch center. Part of that is backups, disaster recovery planning, also supporting hardware and software, so making sure everything's up to date, upgraded as needed, replaced as needed, and includes servers, workstation, networking equipment, Wi-Fi equipment, all that. We also do help desk support, so trouble tickets, if somebody can't get something to work, we'll put in a ticket, and come in and give them a hand. We can track those tickets and, you know, keep an eye out on trends, like, hey, we've seen this quite a bit, so maybe we need to take a look at that. And we also provide cybersecurity training for the staff. Another part of that is we do fish, email phishing testing, so we send out monthly test emails and see if we, you know, if anybody clicks on things they're not supposed to or gives information they shouldn't, so. And then a part of that is also email and communications, so we support, you know, cities' email through Microsoft 365. We've got spam filtering on top of that. And again, that phishing prevention and reporting, also supporting, you know, cities' phone systems, radio systems, websites, social media, all of those kind of systems. Kind of a little snapshot here, again, we provide support for all departments in the city. We support the IT systems. There's 11 different locations throughout the city that has equipment in it that we support, and most of those connect back here, so we're also monitoring those connections and keeping that up and running, and supporting mobile device connectivity for the police, fire department, also campgrounds, parking, and public works. And we're seeing more and more of this type of connectivity as technology kind of comes onboard. Little snapshot into kind of that help desk I mentioned, year-to-date, we've resolved 650 tickets, and then those are just the tickets where people are actually emailing in a ticket. I mean, there's a lot of times where you'll be helping somebody else out, and, you know, two or three other people are going to stop you before you go back to the office, so it can easily be two or three times that, and we just don't have a good way to track that. And I put in here that that's about 100 more tickets than we resolved last year, so we just kind of see that trending up as more and more departments are bringing more technology onboard. So anyway, you know, 150 employees in the city, we have 40 servers, physical servers and virtual servers that we support, and then roughly 200 workstations and laptops, and then you've got all the cell phones and tablets and all that, too, so we're responsible for all of those. And a highlight of a few bigger projects we've done over the last year, maybe 18 months, you know, the recent radio system upgrades, including, you know, tower removal and that, we've kind of offered some input on that. I mentioned we've got George on the team, he's kind of our radio guru, so anything with our city radios, he's definitely on top of, and keeping those up to date and up and running. Big project this year was the CAD system upgrades for dispatch, police, and fire. We worked with the borough and the police department, the fire department to kind of bring those online. And then alongside that, we did some upgrades in dispatch with the new CAD system required, you know, installing additional computers and monitors for everybody, so we kind of tried to clean those up, put in some new systems to make things a little more efficient and easier for the dispatchers. And then we've also installed some fiber optic cable here inside the city hall, just to try and improve network connectivity and future-proof our systems a little bit. Looking ahead here, cybersecurity is always a big concern, so one of our big goals is we're continuing to create and update our policies and procedures to try to align with the NIST cybersecurity framework, so just trying to stay ahead of that as best we can and bring things up to date where we need to. And then some of the bigger projects we have going on, part of the CAD upgrades, one of the things we're working with AT&amp;T is to implement a private cellular network connection for those cruisers, just to further kind of secure that data. And then we've got a city phone system upgrade that we're in the beginning process of planning that and kind of getting ideas on where we want to go with a new system. Same thing with our servers and the data center. And then a big project we're hopefully going to start working on is kind of a location for disaster recovery site, you know, in the event something happens to city hall, where all of our data centers are right now, you know, what would our options be to kind of recover that data and give us another site for that. And as I mentioned, it's a Cyber Security Awareness Month. The theme is called Core Four this year, so the four principles they're kind of putting out there is always use strong passwords and a password manager whenever possible, so try not to write all your passwords down on a sticky note, you know, and stick them under your keyboard or in your desk or something like that. Turn on multi-factor authentication whenever possible. Most services now, like your bank and that kind of stuff, require that, so that's kind of becoming standard. Recognizing and reporting scams on the city side, this is where our phishing and cybersecurity awareness training comes in for staff. And then keeping your software up to date, so these are all things you guys can do at home, just to kind of help keep your system safe. And then there's some links down there if you want additional information about what you can do.
Well, thank you. Very, very concise. Do you have a moment? Are there questions or comments? I always appreciate it when I can't make my phone work. You fix my email for me, so it's always good. I'm one of the drop-ins that doesn't count as a ticket, right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
And then the other presentation is on Project Hope and about opioid overdose kits with Jessica Johnson and.
This will be a remote presentation, so thankfully we have the IT director in the house.
We need your assistance. Are you there? Jessica?
I'm here.
Oh, great, yeah, yeah. Do we have a slide print? Yeah, they're getting that up, too, the, what you got there. Hold on a second. Should we be coming on? There we go. There we go. Is that, is this on your full screen? Are you sharing your full screen that you can?
Yes.
So I think that's as big as we're going to get it on TV. Okay, you can go ahead if you'd like, Jessica.
Okay, good topic. Well, thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. I can't see anyone in the room, so if you have questions, I apologize, I won't be able to address you directly, but my name is Jessica Jopson. I'm with Project Hope, which is a Department of Health project. We're under lots of different acronyms and initialisms I won't go into, but Project Hope is our molaxone distribution program for the state of Alaska. And Kripton has reached out to me many, many, many weeks ago, and we've been starting this conversation so that we can see how we can better support the city of Seward. So thank you for the opportunity to do it. Our goal was actually to be there in person today so that we could kind of talk about what the city could do if anyone had any interest in taking a more active role in the current epidemic work base thing, but today we've kind of, so I'm going to go over a very brief molaxone training. Typically, it's a 30-slide training. It's only going to be about 10 slides tonight. I'm never going to have an opportunity to talk about what we can do for you and what you can do for your city population. So some of this is just data, and I'm going to stay a little bit true. I'm happy to provide you these slides, but this is important to me because I wanted to let you know that in 2023, we had 357 reported overdoses. In 2024, we got number up, not significantly, although every life is significant, but we are still above 370. We're waiting for those to finalize still as information data comes in, but I wanted to make you aware of that. Nearly two in every four of those deaths involved sedentals. So molaxone, everyone called it, we kind of locally as Narcan, they know it's Narcan. It's actually molaxone, that's the drug. Narcan is the clinic, as molaxone is the tissue, right? It works against opioids and opioids alone, heroin, Percocet, methadone, codeine, coccin em, that big scary F-word, fentanyl. It is very effective, and it's a gold standard for overdose reversal. There are three types of kits. I know that we have a couple of ORPs, or overdose response programs in Seward, and every kit that you will see that's passed out, that is a Project Hope kit provided to those overdose response programs, is intranatural, which is that top one at top. I have one with me today. I felt like you guys have a pretty small screen to look at me at, so I won't fiddle with my nose, but that's the number one kit that we pass out in Alaska. If you ever come across an intramuscular or an atomizer, we do go over that training, and that's when we provide this training to the public. I won't again go over that today, it's very, very unlikely that you would see that, but just be aware. And then this is the molaxone emergency training. Oftentimes, when I am presented with the opportunity to train someone, I normally only have about 90 seconds, so it's great to have all of you kind of stuck in here for 10 minutes, because I need to help you be in depth of what it looks like. Number one, we always call 911. The thing I like to point out, if we're training people in a rural setting where they don't have emergency services, make sure you understand what is emergency services in your area. So when we have people who are in unimiquum, you're not likely going to call 911, it's not like they're going to be able to respond very quickly, so we always help people know the lay out of the lane, bring your ass, and respond as quickly as 911 is very important to call before, but during the molaxone. The signs of an overdose, breathing, does it slowly stop, does it respond, they're out in a sleep, so you cannot reach them, are they not responding to your voice or touch? Is their face cool or sweaty to the touch, and has it lost color? Are they having trouble speaking? The center of the pupils might be very small, sometimes pinnies pupil, repair, and their heartbeat, has it slowly stopped? The jugular navel is trained blue or purple, which is fine, obviously. Those of you in the room who may recognize that the signs of somebody who's had a heart attack or seizure and has a close airway, lots of different medical emergencies, can look like an overdose. It is the responsibility of the person who is intentionally missing a molaxone to just feel, I mean, if you see any of these signs or symptoms, it is safe and appropriate for you to administer, even if you could be wrong. That's one of the great things to tell you to call 911. You straighten your temples. If you can, get them on back, put their head back, you're going to support their neck with your hands, and you're going to insert the tip of a nozzle into nostril and press upon your pharynge. You do not want to pry this, it's not like aspirated nasal spray, you're going to do it multiple times to make sure that you've got the full tips, one and done, so that's very important to note. If you cannot get them on their back, that's okay. You just want to try to get your head back as far as you can so that they can be as warm as they can breathe. It's very easy. The recovery position is important. Once the molaxone has been administered, you want a warm person on their side. This prevents them from rolling under the stomach, and it helps support their head. It prevents them from aspirating on their vomit, which is very, very important. If you are physically unable to put someone in a position, that's okay. I think the most important thing that I tell folks is make sure that you are safe before you're making sure this person is safe. So if it is physically impossible for you to do or put you in a position where you're unable to get back up, you know, beware, but this does help because it will help during the, it will help eliminate some of the issues that we're talking about in my spot. Really, no response. I keep saying this is the most important thing, but this is the most important thing. You really want to make sure that you're monitoring the person's condition and in recovery position, and listen two to three minutes. If the person does not breathe normally, then you'll want to administer the second dose. You have two doses in every one of the kits that are provided. Some people choose to cure in multiple doses. I personally, because of my position, have 10, 15, 20 doses all over, multiple in my bags, in my car, and that's pretty rare that that would happen for someone, but that's not safe. You couldn't have it, especially if you're working with a client, but you really need to get that breathing normally. One of the things that we're noticing in our drug supply right now is fentanyl is finding its way into heroin and other opioids and drugs, or things like that, but we're also finding that Zylazine, which is animal tranquilizer, is finding its way into fentanyl. And so what that will do is when you are, when you give a brief administration of molaxone, it may start to breathe normally, but if you're not breathing up, you're not alert, you're not talking. People often type when it's face out is that there's not, this has not done its job. it's safe out is that there's not, this has not done its job, which is not the case. So I would tell folks, you're really just looking for that normal breathing. Full breath every five to seven seconds. If they happen to respond to voice or touch, those are all great signs. But if they haven't, you're looking for a normal breathing. And you can administer the second dose of molaxone in two to three minutes. You have to get it at that time. And if you don't, you're overloading their system with molaxone, and you're going to, much more likely to have them end up in precipitated withdrawal, which is very uncomfortable for them. So after administration, before C, remain calm. Try to keep control of the situation and maintain a calm presence. This person is likely experiencing the scariest things that they've ever had in their lives. Really communicate with them. Walk them through what happens if they were unconscious. Show compassion. Use kind and reassuring language. And continue to monitor. Continue to assess the person for signs of an overdose or other health emergencies. You may have to administer more than one dose of molaxone. We talked a little bit about this overdose withdrawal syndrome, or persistent fatal withdrawal, vomiting, agitation, restless, diarrhea, and goosebumps. It is actually really tough for that person. And so we try to do what we can to avoid putting somebody in just a fatal withdrawal. And then important reminders, there's only one dose of each applicator, so spray directly into the person's nose. Do not do a test for spray. If you can't get the person on their back safely, tilt their head back. The medication can soak into their mucous membrane, the soft tissue that's inside the nose. And molaxone is safe to administer to children and people who are pregnant. So if you're, if you have some of this in your home, and you're tolerating some of it, if anything, it's just going to cause a burning sensation. It's not going to become deep. You probably will not want to stick something like that into their nose again, but it's not going to hurt them. They will not need to seek medical care. They're okay. Here is what we, I'm just doing molaxone now. If the person's not responsive, you can do CPR. If you do not know CPR, do rescue breathing. I'm not able to train anyone how to do rescue breathing. There's a plethora of videos online. I would encourage everyone to take a CPR. Birthday class is very, very important, especially in one of the states with highest birth injury rates and things like that. You never know when you might find somebody who needs CPR. It's also important to know that molaxone lasts 30 to 45 minutes. The person will go back into overdose after the molaxone's worn off. So it's important to give medical attention immediately. The half-life of an opioid is anywhere from six to 12 hours. The half-life of the molaxone is 30 to 45, technically 30 to 90 minutes. So we just tell folks, even if that person comes to and says, I'm good, I'm good, I want to go, make sure that they're aware of what might happen too, which is they're likely going to fall back into an overdose. Report back. Any report back is an incomplete one to help us. There's a QR code on the Tupperware card in every one of our kits. It's so, so important that we make sure that we're getting the data that shows that the program has remained effective. But even if you hear from somebody kind of angrily, hey, Sally, you know, I had to help Sally the other day. She had an overdose. Get the information you can and report it. All of the information that you need, if they identify, why don't I go to Sally? I don't even know that it would be reporting it. I'll just have that information to help back up the efficacy of the program. There are two statutes that will protect you. We have a lot of statutes, 95534, which is immunity for prescribing, providing or administering opioid overdose drugs. And then we have 117131, which is restriction on prosecution for certain procedures in connection with a drug overdose. I say that to say this. I work a lot in the festival scene, and so a lot of people who are attending to do cocaine or ketamine, and maybe they provided it to their group because they bought it. I always tell them, if you did not go and you remain on the scene, comply with the responding officers, responding health, and you are cooperative, you are protected. But please don't let that prevent you from making the call. Or if you yourself have experienced an overdose and need to seek medical treatment, please don't let that prevent you from going because you're afraid that you're going to get arrested. Expiration. Molaxone lasts two to four years, depending on who makes it. Narcan is not for four years. The package of molaxone, which is the molaxone that the state provides, is three years, so expiration date. If expired molaxone is safe to be disposed of in regular trash, you can also keep it. Narcan, there's a study that shows that the efficacy of molaxone, or their Narcan, who sprayed in molaxone, remains 89% effective 30 years after the expiration date. So a lot of the molaxone that I hear is, is expired. I encourage people to keep it. If you have a specific relationship that prohibits you from administering expired medications, I totally understand. But if you are a layperson who just wants to cure it to help their community, you are totally safe to keep what you have. It's also important that you can consider donating it. There's plenty of agencies at nexttoher.org. They gather expired molaxone, and they give it to communities that do not have access to it. And this is the fun thing for Alaska. Basic applicators should be stored at temperatures between 59 and 86 degrees. We live in Alaska. Oftentimes, get left in our vehicles. That's okay. If it freezes, which we left it in a residential freezer overnight for over 24 hours, and then it didn't freeze, and that's anywhere from negative 5 to positive 10 degrees, we didn't know exactly, it didn't freeze. But to say that if it does, we encourage people, we encourage people to put it in the dash of their car, put it in their breath under their armpit, and that will warm it. And it will not work if frozen, so just make sure that you thaw it up for administration. I've got three more slides until I'm done. If you have any other questions, you can go to openwithalaska.gov. Any emails or any questions that you can have for me directly, projecthopealaska.gov. If you can help by, if you're somebody you know who needs help with substances or whatever, please go to findtreatment.gov. You can carry molaxone at all times. You never know when you'll have an oxygen or stable life. If you're interested in helping our community, they become an ORP, please contact me directly. My information is there on the slides. And then, how can we help you? Project Hope is committed to holding special training specials for any interested individuals or businesses that express interest in becoming an overdose drug program. Please continue to work with established ORPs in your areas to help increase the amount of molaxone kits distributed to the public, and they will remain available for any questions you're concerned. So don't hesitate to reach out. I will go back to that slide if you want to see the picture. But if you can, we have my contact information. And with that, I understand that it over time, so I'm going to leave.
Thank you. And I understand that administration is looking into where we can place kits around the city. Did you want to say anything?
Yes, so we were, after a previous council meeting where this topic came up, we reached out to Project Hope to see some of the resources available, which is what spurred this presentation. And now next steps is working with Project Hope and the group and figuring out what would be the best solution for us to make sure that we're putting molaxone in places that it will be used, needed, et cetera, so that we can have that resource on hand for our community. So we, we will keep chugging along in that aspect, but a big thank you today for the presentation so that we get some more information as we move forward in that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We generally don't take questions from the audience.
I just wanted to say that the molaxone trainer at Seward, I do have a training and I do have ample supplies.
Okay, great. So when we take a break, or at the end, if you want to talk to this person here about it, then maybe Edman can too. So, great. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Well, we're going to move on to public hearings. We may not go through all five in a row. We might take a bit of a break, but right now, we'll begin. So we have three ordinances for enactment, and these all came from planning and zoning. The first ordinance is Ordinance 2025-014, and you can find it on page 42 of the packet. Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, could you please read that into the record?
Ordinance 2025-014, amending Seward city code 15.10.140 definitions for animal shelter and veterinary hospital, and 15.10.226 land uses allowed table for veterinary hospital.
Okay, I'd ask for a motion to enact in a second, please.
I'll move for the enactment of ordinance 2025-014.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Administration.
I'll invite the community, I want to invite Courtney up to speak to this.
Thank you. Go ahead, Courtney.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. So veterinary hospital from Soldatna has been offering temporary veterinary services at the Seward Animal Shelter, which is located in an institutional zoning district. Animal shelters are allowed in the institutional zoning district with a conditional use permit. However, veterinary hospitals are not allowed there. Veterinary hospitals are currently only allowed by conditional use permit in auto, commercial, industrial, and resource management zoning districts. And since veterinary care is such an important need in Seward, this led us to have a conversation with the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the land uses allowed table to clarify where and how such services can operate in the community. And so the proposed legislation that you have before you would, in effect, amend the definition of veterinary hospitals to focus on the services provided and the professionals offering them. It would allow veterinary services outright in auto, commercial, industrial, resource management, and that institutional zoning district. And then it would add a definition for animal shelters, which is currently absent in the code.
Okay, thank you. And this was, this comes from planning and zoning. With that, I will open the public hearing where you'll have, if you choose, five minutes to speak on this, and then we'll bring it back after that. There was a sign up for this. Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed in?
No one has signed in.
Okay. But that's okay. If anyone wished to speak to this ordinance. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Are there comments or questions for administration from council? Seems pretty cut and dried to me. Are we ready to vote? Well, that was quick. Mr. Clerk, we're ready to vote on this.
Voting on the enactment of ordinance 2025-014. Osenga?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That ordinance has been enacted.
Okay, thank you. The second one is Ordinance 2025-015. And when you are ready, Mr. Clerk, could you please read that?
Ordinance 2025-015, amending Seward city code chapter 15.20, signs.
Okay, and I'd ask for a motion to enact in a second, please.
Move for the enactment of ordinance 2025-015.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Administration.
I'll invite Courtney to speak to this.
There's going to be a lot of that.
This is quite the lengthy ordinance in, you know, packets. I'll try to keep my explanation a little bit more brief. But the Planning and Zoning Commission started their review of the city's sign code in the summer of 2023. So this has been a long process. And their primary focus on reviewing and updating the sign code was to address confusion regarding temporary signage and inconsistencies in owning sign regulations. And during this process of updating the sign code, staff also identified the need for the code to be updated, to be brought into compliance with the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in the Reed versus Town of Gilbert case of 2015. So in this case, the Supreme Court ruled that sign codes cannot regulate signs differently based on their content. For example, rules that require staff to read a sign's message, such as those applying specifically to political signs, are unconstitutional. So instead, sign regulations are required to be content neutral. They can only focus on regulating time, place, size of the sign, and manner in which it's displayed. So the summary of the proposed amendments that you have before you, we've removed definitions that are tied to content, such as political signs, real estate signs, construction signs. We've eliminated unused sign definitions and then added new ones that are regulated with our code. And then there's some minor housekeeping edits that you'll notice as well. And we've also revised section 15.20.030, which is signs allowed without permits to delete the political sign provisions that were previously in code. Specifically, I want to make mention of feather signs, which were not previously defined in code, but were effectively prohibited because they were categorized as animated and portable signs. However, the lack of the defined term of feather signs created a lot of confusion and inconsistent enforcement, particularly during community events such as Mermaid Festival and Fourth of July, where feather signs are commonly used. So in this proposed ordinance, you'll see that the Planning and Zoning Commission has amended code to allow mobile vendors to use feather signs during specific community events. However, I've provided a laydown for an amendment to this portion of code because we received an inquiry recently from the Parks and Recreation Department, and they were interested in using feather signs during their community races. And they want to purchase some feather signs that would alert drivers of the presence of runners and cyclists on the road. Currently, the Parks and Rec Department uses A-frames, A-frame signs, to notify people at the race course and that runners are on the road. However, A-frames are low to the ground and are often obscured by parked cars or vegetation, and they're prone to be knocked over. And this creates a lot of concerns, safety concerns, and a lot of extra staff time to go and reset signs during races. So feather signs would be a lot taller and more visible. They'd be more durable in the wind and would just enhance the safety and lessen workload for the staff. So as written right now, the code does allow feather signs only by mobile vendors during community events. But I would request that someone would potentially make this amendment to strike the words "by mobile vendor" from number six on the top of page 60 in your packet. And then this would allow more user groups to access the use of feather signs during community events as seen fit.
Okay, and I will make that amendment after the public hearing, pardon. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open now the public hearing for ordinance 2025-015. Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed in?
Nobody has signed in.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak to the sign ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. And the first thing I'll do is offer that amendment. This came from the Community Development Department. I move to amend section 15.20.030, signs allowed without permits, letter P, number six, by striking the words "by mobile vendors." So the current version would read, feather signs may be allowed by mobile vendors during specific scheduled community events as determined and approved by administrative official. And the amended version would read, feather signs may be allowed during specific scheduled community events as determined and approved by administrative official. In other words, we just removed "by mobile vendors" as a specific. I'd ask for a second to that.
A second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is that clear to everybody what that means?
Mm-hmm.
Any comments? Okay, we're ready to vote on the amendment, Mr. Clerk, and then I'll pass it on if I need it.
This is voting on just the amendment to strike "by mobile vendors." Wells?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
The amendment has passed, and the main motion as amended is back on the floor.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? A lot of these things that were brought up have been plaguing me for many years, and it's kind of nice to clean up language. Planning, zoning, and community development, they're all doing a really good job of fixing things that have bothered me for years. Just one of the beyondings things. So, anything from council on this? Are we ready to vote? We're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Voting on the enactment of ordinance 2025-015 as amended. Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That ordinance has been enacted.
Okay. And the last ordinance for public hearing is ordinance 2025-016. And when you're ready, Mr. Clerk, could you please read that into the record?
Ordinance 2025-016, amending Seward city code 15.10.140 definitions for dwelling, apartment, commercial building, and mixed-use development, and table 15.10.226, land uses allowed for dwelling, apartment, in a commercial building.
Okay, thank you. And that's on page 66 and beyond in the packet. I'd ask for a motion to enact in a second, please.
I'll move for the enactment of ordinance 2025-016.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Administration. Here she comes again.
As many of you know, over the past year, the Planning and Zoning Commission has held many work sessions discussing housing. And during these work sessions, it's been being aware that there are some unclear regulations for mixed-use buildings, particularly apartments and commercial structures. So currently, constructing a commercial building with apartments requires a conditional use permit in the Central Business Zoning District and Harvard Commercial Zoning District. And this involves ambiguous parking standards, which are determined case by case by the commission. This uncertainty makes it difficult for developers to assess project feasibility, creating financial and regulatory risks that discourage development. Another issue is that many existing apartments in these districts are non-conforming, having been built before CUP requirements. So if these buildings are damaged or destroyed, reconstruction would now require a CUP, leaving the owners uncertain whether the owners uncertain whether they could rebuild or restore their property to its previous form. So the proposed legislation before you would in effect create a definition for mixed-use development, which is currently allowed in our code, just never before defined. And it would also allow apartments in a mixed-use building or commercial building to be built outright in Central Business and Harbor Commercial Zoning Districts.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-016. Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed in?
Nobody has signed in.
Say, come on up. And we'll need your name, and if you live inside or outside city limits, and you'll have five, up to five minutes.
Perfect. My name is Kelly Hatfield. I live outside of city limits, but I own a piece of property inside city limits that zoned Central Business District. And I've been talking to Courtney and Danny for many years about making this more clear so that I'm able to develop it, ideally into a retail space on the bottom with apartments on top. And so the way that it's written now makes it much more clear. Otherwise, I was going to have a hard time paying probably close to $100,000 for plans and not knowing if I would get the CUP to build those plans. So that was kind of the catch, is that I didn't know what they were going to approve, and then I had to show them what I wanted to build, and we couldn't really move forward from there. So this will clarify it a lot and make it easier for me to come up with something to build there. I would like to have a majority of the apartments be year-round housing, and it was making it difficult for me to make that pencil out. So I appreciate it if you guys would consider passing this as it stands.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Questions or comments or anything? Councilmember Barnwell?
Yeah, I am very supportive of the Business District downtown for three-story, amending this for them. I do have a concern about the Harbor District now that we are at 38 feet in the harbor. I'd hate to see a building going on on the south ramp there, what do we call the uplands. If we were to, we are going to develop that, if that ended up being a bunch of B&Bs with, you know, a business on the base and two floors of B&Bs going up 38 feet. I do have a problem with that. I don't know how to correct this. I'm in favor of this in concept. I'm just gonna put that out there that I have a problem with 38-foot in the harbor and the idea of B&Bs stacked up in the harbor. I don't know if anybody wants to.
Administration, you want to? Now that you have your mouth.
Well, with, with the South Harbor uplands proposal that we're doing, we are gonna have, when we decide to develop that, we're gonna have design standards that will go along that will actually dictate how all those buildings look. We do want them to be two stories. The Harbor Master's Office is gonna be two stories as well. We're gonna, it's gonna be a very specific design standard that you guys are gonna get to approve for the way all those other structures look and how those lots get divvied up for lease spaces. And so I think that would be a safeguard within that for that South Harbor uplands area.
Go ahead.
So how do you, if it's a 38-foot rule, how do you control them to?
Because they're city lease sites.
And even though we allow 38 feet, we can dictate?
Yeah, we will have a design standard because we want that whole area to look consistent and look nice. And so, because if you look at that other area that we have, there's some that are really well-kept, and there's some that look really great, there's some that are oddball. But we want this to be something that's very like, kind of like standardized, will be open year-round, you know, some of those types of things. And so within those design standards, we can create an envelope that will, that will work in that. So you guys will get to approve those design standards.
And those would be within the lease agreements as well. So anybody who leases that property would then have to follow and abide by that lease agreement.
Right.
And when we approved the 38-foot for that area, it was mentioned that most of that land is city property, which we lease, which we control, like their sayings. That would be the entirety of the uplands there, the south. So I think it's pretty secure. Other comments? Are we ready to vote? Smiles and nods. Mr. Clerk?
Voting on the enactment of ordinance 2025-016. Wells?
Absolutely.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That ordinance has been enacted.
Okay, moving along, we have two resolutions requiring.
Go ahead, you're fine.
Two resolutions requiring public hearing. We'll address the first one, and then maybe take a break after that. The first one is Resolution 2025-096. Mr. Clerk, would you please read that?
Resolution 2025-096.
That's all you have.
Resolution 2025-096, authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute the purchase and sale agreement and related documents for the purchase of 2.7 acres of land, physical address 104 Benson Drive, parcel 14502302, in the amount of $580,000 and appropriating funds.
Okay. I guess I can do the, should we do the conflict first?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm gonna have to step away from the bias for this one.
Councilmember Osanga has a conflict because a family member is selling that property. So if you want to get out of here?
I will.
Okay. And then I would entertain a motion to approve in a second, please, from those who are left. A motion to approve in a second.
Make the motion to approve Resolution 2025-096.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to invite Deputy City Manager Biglang to speak to this, and we're passing it down.
Okay, although this may be just a little bit tedious, I'm gonna read the agenda statement just because I think it has some really important info for the public to hear, although they may not have read the entire statement. So it gives a little background, I think gives some data and support for what we're requesting to do. So in 2023, the City commissioned a public safety feasibility study. An excerpt from that, from the police department portion is attached to this legislation. And that was to determine the current status and future needs of the facilities for the fire police departments. Both of the current facilities were built in the 1960s following the 1964 Good Friday earthquake. Since those facilities were built, Seward's population has doubled, staff, equipment size, and technology have increased significantly. Additionally, there were no service needs across the bay as Nash Road Extension and SMIC had been developed. All these factors significantly impact the facility size required for both of those. The official feasibility study determinations were that the facilities were obviously outdated, significantly undersized in both interior and exterior spaces, and don't meet the current code requirements and recommendations for police and fire professional organizations. It was also determined that the Fire Department and Police Department do not need to be co-located. While both departments are in public safety, functionally, there's very little overlap, and there will not be a significant cost savings by co-locating. Additionally, co-locating has a potential to create vulnerability. If a co-located facility were made in opo by a disaster, both police and fire services would be lost. The feasibility study determined that a minimum lot size for an adequate police department facility is around two acres. In addition to the police department, this facility would house the city's dispatch center, as well as the emergency operations center known as the EOC, that would be stood up in event of disaster or significant emergency situation. And this by the facility needs to be located outside of the 2022 UAF tsunami inundation zone. The map is attached there. And if you look at that map, the red line is kind of like the worst-case possible, like scenario that could ever be happened by their predicted models. The city does not purchase land without careful consideration of both current and future community needs, recognizing that developable land in Seward is limited, and that in many cases, addressing middle housing solutions must take priority. When the city does move forward with the purchase, it is because the property has been identified as essential to meeting long-term needs, not just for today, but for decades to come. In recent years, the city has sold over six acres of land. The list below is the year of the sale, the property size, the price, and the price per acre. In 2021, the Chugashme Clinic property, which was sold for 3.31 acres for a little over $663,000, which is a little over $200,000 per acre. In 2022, the Alutic Pride Marine Institute property was sold, was agreed to be sold. And that's 1.5 acres for $500,000. That was a little over $333,000 per acre. In 2023, the Seward City Tours property, which is part of the Fort Raymond complex area there, that was 1.4 acres, and that sold for $290,000, and that was a little over $207,000 per acre. The current property is 2.7 acres for $580,000, which is a little over $214,000 per acre. This aligns with the price the city has sold land for, accounting for inflation over the last few years. The city just recently closed in the sale of the Alutic Pride property. These funds will contribute to the purchase of this property. This future facility will not have a jail in it. The city ceased operating the jail, the state jail, two years ago as they were not funding it fully. The city paid hundreds of thousands of dollars from city funds annually, those are taxpayer dollars, as the state was only meeting half of their funding obligation. Additionally, the city could not compete with Spring Creek Correctional Facility for staff as they have higher hourly pay, signing bonuses, and significant overtime opportunities. It has also been determined that keeping the DMV facility in City Hall will best serve the public, as it is a community business operation rather than a police function, and citizens need access to the finance utility counter for proof of residence. Removing the jail in the DMV from the police facility will help shrink the square footage needed to reduce the cost of the building, which also reduces the amount of traffic to that facility. In summary, this is a good property for the city to purchase. It aligns with a comprehensive Plan 2.2.9 public safety, support adequate police services and equipment, maintain an effective public safety communication system in Seward. The price is a fair market value. It meets the size needs of the future facility requirements as determined by the study. It is outside of the most recent update of the tsunami inundation zone. It's in close proximity to all three schools. And for the EOC, the emergency stuff that is in the high school and supplies are in the adjacent borough maintenance facility. Administration has heard concerns from the public about potential traffic impacts of placing a police station in a residential neighborhood. On a day-to-day basis, the police department generates very little traffic. The department no longer provides public services such as fingerprinting, and unlike the fire department, officers do not typically respond from the station but directly from the field. At any given time, only two to three officers are on duty working 10 to 12-hour shifts, and they spend 60% to 70% of the time in the field rather than at the station. This results in far fewer vehicle trips than most other uses of the property. For comparison, if this park were developed for housing, it's currently zoned R3. Whether it doesn't single-family homes or multi-unit apartments, it would increase, create significantly more traffic. To further ease concerns, the city has also engaged with the school district and borough about establishing additional access points through the school properties to help disperse traffic flow. And as a, and as a side note, this PD facility, like on the kind of, when we're looking at time scales, this is kind of a more five-to-10-year project out, so we would have time to really establish like traffic patterns through the school properties, which is actually like that, it's been a conversation that's been going on since I was the principal of the middle school like over 10 years ago. And so I think it's, that would be a way to really disperse traffic for those schools and the whole area. And that is all I have. Oh, and I did, I did hand out, this is a laydown. And when we did the first couple rounds, we looked at properties, the site analysis for properties, and we're looking at kind of the public safety pieces and Fire Department, Police Department. But then after we kind of established where the Fire Department needs to be and established that this facility needs to be outside of that tsunami zone because of the EOC. And, and so we, we had, we talked about a lot of these, we did some different site analysis, R&amp;M did, but we never finalized the report just because that was the time when Chief Nichol was departing. And Chief Tyner was coming in, and we wanted to kind of just put a pause on things until he was able to get his feet on the ground before we could pick up this project. And so once this became, once this went up for sale, and this was the number-one kind of departmental preference for a site, but I did have R&amp;M go ahead and, in the last couple weeks, just do the kind of a site evaluation, and really, I think, just to not read the whole thing, but to look at page four and then page five, which basically shows all the different things that they look at for this site, whether it's particular access, lot configuration, pedestrian access, security, proximity to different things, adjacent land use zoning. But you can see that this is, this was, there's a reason why this was picked, is because it did have a very high preference in the way it ranked and the way it fit the needs of the study. So that's all I have.
Did you have anything to add?
No.
That was pretty thorough.
Very thorough.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-096. Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed in?
There are two people signed in to speak. First on the list is Lori Draper.
And you know the routine. And you'll have five minutes.
Lori Draper, inside the city limits. I walk by this property probably almost every day. I've been looking at it for years going, wow, great place for apartments. Someday, that's gonna go for sale, and they're gonna make apartments there. So I finally see the for-sale sign, and then I hear this harebrained idea that the city of Seward is gonna purchase this property and put a police department right in the middle of a residential area. I was steamed up about that. I was like, what are they thinking? We're gonna take private property off the tax rules and turn it into a public place right in R3 zone, ideally suited for apartments, completely eliminating the private sector from being able to bid on that property and build, build apartments there. We did a study. We named all these properties. We picked properties out, but we're just gonna ignore those, and now we're gonna, this just came for sale, so they're gonna get us. This is going through my mind. And then, one by one, I'm talking to people, and I'm talking to Jason, and I, one by one, eliminate all of my issues, like, okay, okay, we can't do that because of that. And now we can't, now we have this tsunami map that my house is gonna be destroyed in, and I just live right down the street from it. So then, as I was doing it, I thought of a solution, because the one problem that isn't explained well enough to me is taking this land off, I mean, we're taking private land, taking it off the tax rules, and not allowing residential rentals to be built there, and that's what we need the most. Ask anybody in real estate in Seward, we need long-term residential rentals, non-subsidized. So what if the city carved out a piece of these lands that we're gonna use for the police department and the fire department and re-zoned them into an R3? There's gotta be some part of those 11 acres that we could do that, and then, then we're in a position where we can make some parameters, like, this has gotta be long-term housing, you know? We can set down some rules, and we can make incentives for it to be residential rentals. So it might be a win-win situation, because I can see now that the reasons that this was chosen for the site. And I also, you know, didn't know that this other, you know, study had been done on that property. And anyway, I just wanted to put that out there as a bug in your ear, that, you know, when you take public land and take it off the tax rules, we have so much money off the tax rules in our town. It would be nice to see us get some badly-nated housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Mr. Clerk, who's next?
Sierra Rowland?
And we'll need your name inside or outside of the city limits, please.
All right. My name is Sierra Rowland. I do live inside the city limits. I actually live on Swetman across from the proposed development of this. Unfortunately, my husband couldn't be here today, but we did want to voice our support as new members of the community for the borough to purchase this land and development into a police station. We have two small children, and seeing that lot being empty, knowing that it's right next to the high school, and that it has so much potential to be a community space that could be used to help benefit our students and help benefit other families, really speaks to the heart of why we chose Seward. We would love, love to see that property be developed into a police station that also helps to support. helps to support local families through either a childcare center that detached, playground, so on and so forth, that students after school that need somewhere safe to go can utilize as well. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. And no one else signed in?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, does anyone in the public wish to speak to this?
My name is Kathy Frederickson. I live inside the city. In fact, I live on Benson. And when I first heard about this, I just went, no! But I decided I needed to let the people on Benson know that this was in the works, because it really surprised me. So I went to all the houses in, on Benson, that are actually on Benson, and talked to the people that were there. I got one, I don't care, I got one, yeah, that's a good idea. And I got five different households that said they were concerned. And what they were concerned about was traffic, not the police station, they're concerned about traffic. So I started looking into this, and that night, or that morning, I sat down and counted what the cars were coming up right before school, because I figured that's really when we had the most traffic. And on the, let's see, the first one was on the, the 19th of September, there were 77 cars passing one way or the other, probably some of them doing both. Three buses, two bikes, two kids, no, six kids on bikes, no, seven, five going up and two coming back, and no walkers that day. So then I thought, wow, that's pretty high, let's try another day. So on the 9th, or no, yeah, let's see, yeah, October 9th, there were 56 cars coming up and going down, which I thought, wow, that's quite a difference. And two buses, and five bikes, and five walkers. And by the way, I witnessed the bikes being driven off the road by the fact that two cars are coming. We're talking about a street that has only up and down, no sides at all. I mean, you go in the weeds or you go in the ditch. And then the next day, there was, it was a Friday, and I thought, okay, well, let's see if the Fridays are still real big. Well, this Friday was only 13 coming up and going down, then I realized there was no school. That was this last Friday. So this morning, I said, okay, well, let's try this morning. 81 cars going up and down, three buses, one bike, and one walker. It was raining, so there was no kids walking. So since, I would just like to support the idea that we get that road opened up to the school from the other side. Because the reason this is happening is they come from out of town, they go up Benson because they, to get to the high school, because they can't come through. And then they turn around, come back down Benson and go home. If they're going to go to work, they come up Benson and then go down Swetman and Resurrection. And the Swetman and Resurrection would not change. The Swetman and Resurrection would still get the same number of people going down that way. If a person was bringing their child to both schools, it'd be a lot easier to go on downtown and just go down Swetman. They're not going to come down Benson then for that. They wouldn't be coming up Benson to go to the high school, and if they're going to a grade school and the middle school, they're going to turn around and go back the way they came, because that's where they're, you know, they're going to go home quicker. So I'd just like to support us opening that road up. And like I said, people weren't concerned about the, the police station. That wasn't the concern, it was all about traffic. So thank you for letting me speak without thinking about it first, but.
Thank you for your statistical analysis.
I support the whole thing.
I might want to get your information from you first.
Is there anyone else out there that would like to comment?
Thank you, Kathy.
Any other comments before I close? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council?
Can we address one thing real quick?
Oh, yeah.
Could I just speak to some of the, the things, is that okay, before you? So I did, I did actually talk to the borough, and I've talked to the school district already about, about the traffic, and that is an issue. And they were, I think as long as the community supports it, they seem like they were, they don't want to do anything against our community, but that was always back then too, is that they want, they want to do what the community supports, and so. But we did talk about, the thing that that area needs is a, is a continuous sidewalk that goes from the elementary school and not, doesn't wrap into middle school, but comes across where that little green belt is, and then comes up through the high school and all, and connects the sidewalk all the way up, basically, to the turn of Benson. And that way, kids are not crammed on that road. And, and so, and there's a lot of things too, you could put bumps in there, you could do all kinds of things to make sure the traffic and make it a school zone, and so we do think that's an important piece to making this work. We do have thoughts about addressing R3 and like multifamily housing with some city properties. That's a conversation we've kind of had internally, and so we'd love to bring those to you at some time, because we do think that that is, Ms. Draper is correct, that that is the city's biggest need. And with the 2.7 acres, the, the department only really needs like about two, but we did want that to be kind of like an, like a, a screened park-ish area that you could go in front and have trees, have a landscape, and also blend nicely into the Jesse Lee Park that will be across the street with a dice sidewalk that wraps around. So we do feel like this could be integrated into that space very well. And additionally, we do know that since we're at a better staffing place now with the police department, that, that they are talking about reinstituting the school resource officer program in the schools in the coming years, which would be a great part to have that location there so close.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it to council. I think all my questions were answered in the agenda statement. Are there questions, comments? Councilmember Barnwell?
I'm, I kind of agree with the mayor that my questions were answered also. Good work on administration for this. I live a block away from Benson. I've spent a lot of time on that road, walking up and down, and it's crazy. I've been, I've actually had to jump off the road when the high school came down the road, out of control, in the snowy, on a snowy, icy day. I think, however, that, that off Swetman there, there's a, there's a, it's getting pretty high density, and I, and I just, I like the idea of the police station, it kind of alleviates that, my concern of more density there. Part of the problem with Benson is a lot of walkers, a lot of people walking down Safeway. Honestly, what I would like to see is, I don't know how you'd ever pull that off, so good luck with that, but maybe you could hire Kathy to work with the community development, figure this one out. But, you know, have like a, like a walk, walking path on Benson, but I don't, I don't know how you'd ever do that, but that would be ideal. Or maybe life, I don't know. Otherwise, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I, I also live very near that and right across the street from him, and so it's, the initial, like others, when we first heard about it, it was kind of a shocking idea, but I think the end, my concerns have been addressed, and so.
Yes, I mean, I live in the neighborhood as well. Yeah, no, the more I think about it too, I do think that it is a good location, being in the center of a residential area, kind of fostering that community to be involved with the public safety and the police, and probably a crime deterrent for that residential area as well, so I'm all, I'm all for it.
And a deterrent to speeding. Nobody speeds past a police station.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, with the caveat that, that, yeah, we need to work with the borough to open up that area, and there was willingness, after the fact, to work with us when they were doing the construction. It was just a matter of, I didn't ask the right people originally, and, and so there, there is, you know, to open that up and make the flow better for the dropping off of people. Are we ready to vote on this? There's only four of us. Ready. Mr. Clerk, we're ready.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2025-096. Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Okay. I'm going to have us take about a five-minute break before we move on. We have two more things to do and one discussion. We need about five minutes.
Okay, the mics are back on and we are on air.
I'll bring it back for the exciting conclusion of our meeting tonight. We have a couple more items. Um, we have one more public hearing. Um, it is on Resolution 2025-097. Mr. Clerk, would you please read that?
Resolution 2025-097, resolution of the City Council of the City of Seward, Alaska, authorizing Amendment Number Four to Cooperative Agreement with an amendment to the Third amended and restated agreement for lease of Track 2A waterfront tracks and the lease, operation, and maintenance of the Alaska Sea Life Center.
Okay, and you'll find out on page 104 of the packet. I'd ask for a motion to approve in a second, please.
I'm moving for the approval of Resolution 2025-097.
Oh, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, everybody's excited about this. Um, Administration, would you like to...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, um, thank you to Chris for reading out that resolution title, which doesn't really give any insight to what this resolution does, so I'll give a little bit more detail. Um, this resolution amends a 1995 lease agreement with the Alaska Sea Life Center. And when that lease agreement was originally signed before the Sea Life Center became the Sea Life Center that we know today, there were originally four parties involved in it. The Sea Life Center as an organization, also known as SAMs, the city as the property owner, the ADFNG, Alaska Department of Fish and Game, and EVOS, which is the Exxon Valdez Oil Spill Trust, the council. And EVOS and ADFNG were included in that as a bit of an overseer in various ways to ensure that the facilities were constructed and operated in the manner intended by EVOS. ADFNG was also involved as a safeguard, um, in the future in case anything happened over the course of that ASLC coming up to full operations. Under the current agreement, um, if the city just determined that the facilities cannot generate revenues to cover operating expenses, um, as this, as, um, determined by an independent financial consultant, um, ADFNG has one year to come in and operate that facility. Um, that is what the current agreement says, but it's also not really how things are in practice. We haven't ever gotten to that point, thankfully, but if we got to that point, um, we would want it to be more of a relationship between a property owner and a leasing, rather than allowing the stake to come in and decide that they want to operate the facility for a year. So this amendment to the lease removes Alaska Department of Fish and Game from the equation entirely and is approved by both ADFNG and the Sea Life Center. EVOS was previously removed as well. So this is the next step in making sure that this lease agreement is between the city own, the city who owns the property, and the Alaska Sea Life Center who leases the property. Um, and I think I did a decent job of explaining that, which is a difficult thing to kind of wrap your head around, but I'm proud of how I did it.
Okay. Alrighty, I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-097. Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed in?
Nobody has signed in.
Does anyone wish to speak? Come on out. Had to wait a long time for this.
Hi, everybody. I'm Wei Hua. I'm the, um, I live at the city limits and I'm also the president and CEO of the Alaska Sea Life Center. And, um, we support this amendment and it will really help ease arrangement and agreements between the city and ourselves. Um, this is a long time in the working, so we hope you'll pass this.
Thank you. It's good to see you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry.
No one else.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Um, any questions or comments?
Can she explain this again?
So we're good, ready to vote? We're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2025-097. Kreitz?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Okay, so that was five public hearings. That's pretty good. We're down to one last resolution here. Um, in new business, this is Resolution 2025-098. You notice how they're numerically following one another. And when you're ready, Mr. Clerk, could you please... Wow, I didn't...
It's been four years, I had no idea.
Sometimes stating the obvious is quite startling. Yes, Mr. Clerk, could you please...
Resolution 2025-098, approving the bargaining agreement between the City of Seward and the Seward Public Employees Association, covering terms and conditions of employment for all members of the collective bargaining unit effective January 1st, 2026 and ending December 31st, 2028.
Okay, and you'll find out on page 117. I'd need a motion to approve in a second, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-098. I'm sorry.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Um, Administration, do you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the fourth collective bargaining agreement with the City of Seward and the Seward Public Employees Association, following union collective bargaining um, that we did sometime in August, I believe. Um, and so in this contract tonight, which will run from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2028, there are some changes that I would definitely like to highlight, although there is a really wonderful article-by-artikel summary of what has and has not been changed. Um, the big thing to note is the, um, the cost of living increases each year for the collective bargaining union, uh, unit. And one of the things that we as an administration wanted to be sure of was to have that tied to the CPI. Because these CPI increases, that effectively, um, causes decrease in wages because everything becomes more expensive. So for 2026, we agreed on a 3% COLA loss, COLA, um, cost of living increase, which is just about a half percent higher than the current COLA. So we're currently at 2.4 based off Anchorage CPI, um, through August 2025. And so for FY '26, we're going to, we agreed to implement a 3%, which is only 1% higher than what we had already previously budgeted for in our FY '26 budgeted documents. So we won't see a huge impact to the budget there. For the remaining two years of the contract, we will, um, we agreed on a 2.5 to 5% increase, which would be half a percentage higher than CPI. So if CPI in 2026 is 2.2, the employees would see a 2.7 increase to accommodate for being further away from that Anchorage zone. Um, another, um, monetary impact that we would see is changing the annual retention bonus. Currently, the annual retention bonus is a bonus that employees receive at the end of the year that is 1.5% of their wage, their Clark Griswold annual bonus, you know? But, um, it remained 1.5 no matter the length of your service to the city. And so one of the things we would discuss is implementing ways to ensure that when somebody reaches a certain amount of years, they have incentives to stay with the city because turnover is one of the highest costs in employees, um, in our bottom line personnel. And so we're implementing a change that for every additional five years you work, that, um, bonus increases at half a percentage point. So from years one to four, you'll receive your 1.5% bonus that already exists. Five to nine, it'll be 2.5 to jump up to there. Um, oh, 2%. Five to nine will be 2%. 10 to 14, 2.5. 15 to 20, 3%. 20, 24, 3.5. 25%, 25 years, 4%. So it increases every five years by, um, half a percentage point. And I think that's really, um, an interesting thing to note as we look at what the PERS system in Tier Four has become. Um, when you work as a city employee, you have the Alaska State Retirement, but starting at five years, you're fully vested. So there's none of that, like, getting to the next level that you would get in the traditional Tier One through Three. So this is a good way for us to make up for that and have employees stick around past the five-year mark to see those incentives build up over time. Um, another change I wanted to highlight was, um, we had previously had a, um, an increase in wages that were associated to taking continuing education or becoming certified, um, taking on professional development opportunities. And that increase in wage was a really, um, it was 5% based off of a, of your wage, based off of a course or certification you could take approved by your department head. But there was no limitation to how many times a year you can get that 5% increase, how many times in your work life you can get that 5% increase. And the courses and certification was a little bit, um, undefined. So in this agreement, we agreed to one-step increase for every certification that you take. And then we're working to create a really defined, um, list of what that looks like. So that's a good change that we made as well. And then one of the bigger discussions we had was establishing a labor management committee, um, that will comprise of, um, management and union representatives to meet and discuss some of the issues that come up over the years so that we can keep an informed and ongoing discussion. And I think those are the ones I wanted to hit as the big things that I wanted to make sure you all knew in case you, um, yeah. Those are the ones I wanted to hit.
And we have heard from the union rep that approved. Any questions or concerns? Yes, Councilmember Wei Hua.
Do the City Council get the $2,700 per year legal fee?
Oh, yeah, that's the other one. Yeah. Um, yeah, that's a really, really cool thing. Just to, you know, it's a small amount to have. Sorry, I'm trying to pull that up. What page are you on?
Uh, nine, top.
Okay. So the $2,700 a year legal fee is an inter, a really cool thing that APEA provides as a whole group so that any individual member can utilize that for, um, something in their life that they need legal representation for. And, um, I had talked with Sam, our attorney, about this. And he said it was something that he often saw as being really, really useful for small things in the day-to-day life that you just needed help on. And it's a super low cost to the city and, um, potentially a really, really beneficial one to our employees. So that was something we were excited to work through and add with with them.
And they can't sue the city with it.
And they can't sue the city with it.
Okay, any other questions?
But no, the City Council does not, you're not in the collective bargaining union. You can't use it.
Okay, we're ready to vote. We're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2025-098. Kreitz?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Okay, so the only other item in other new business, we are to discuss adjustments to the regular City Council meetings in November and December. Um, this is brought to us by the city managers. So that's what you're thinking.
Okay, so, um, what am I thinking?
What are you...
So for the regular meetings of the City Council on the second and fourth Monday, um, as we're looking forward to November, uh, I will be missing the October 26th meeting for the ICMA, the City Manager Annual Conference, and the November 10th meeting I will also be missing for a statewide, um, Alaska Energy Conference as well. So those two meetings, I'll be gone. So this is self-serving in that I don't like missing two meetings in a row. But then looking at the calendar as well, it seems that November 24th is right before Thanksgiving holidays and November 10th is right before Veterans Day. And so we were potentially toying with the idea of having one meeting in November on November 17th, um, kind of in the center of that month, so that the two holidays were separated from that. Because that's also something we usually do in December because the December 8th first meeting is during the AML conference with Jason and I, as well as potentially several council members will be attending. And December 22nd is the week of Christmas, which we usually cancel that in order to accommodate travel and the holidays. Um, we have done a bit of, um, legwork ahead of time to see what these two meeting, what these meetings would look like and if they would become quote-unquote "monster" meetings. And so, uh, we're working already, if this was, if this schedule was to take place, of spreading out some of those end-of-year, um, decisions and resolutions across the three meetings rather than dumping them all on one of them or the other. And, um, I believe in talking with several of the newly appointed council members, this would make one be able to attend the November 17th meeting and does not have any bearing on the other's ability to attend. Um, so I just wanted to throw it out there, see what you guys think.
Okay, yeah, well, I'm all for it. I mean, I've started... For example, I felt that this, I have been so ready to, I felt tonight's meeting would go really long with the amount of stuff we had, and obviously it didn't. And we covered a whole lot of stuff. So, um, this also happens, we always have since I've been on, just having one meeting in December anyway, and it's never really affected too much. And so I think it's a great idea to meet just November 17th and December 15th. And that's just my opinion. How about you guys? Any objections maybe?
I'm good. I wouldn't be here for the November 24th either, I'll be out of town, so that works.
More meetings. I love meetings, but this is, you know, yes.
Can we just make sure that they, they don't want us into a three-hour meeting on the two hour, the two, the two meetings?
Well, that is...
So we got a deal.
Hey, we, Mr. Clerk, remind us when we have to, what's our drop dead after voting to go longer? What is, when we...
After you vote for the additional hour, I think. Gosh, is it midnight?
I think it probably is close to that. So you guys are getting like, I mean, we've never gone that late for years, so don't worry about it. Are there any... I think we're in agreement. Okay, great. I mean, we just need to have an answer, or do we need to vote? We're okay? Okay, consensus. And that was all the business we had. Um, uh, we've got a few letters that people can read and a survey analysis on the comprehensive plan that's in the packet if anyone wants to read those things. Um, so we're down to citizen comments. And, um, this is, so you're limited to five minutes and you can speak on anything? Is there a citizen or two out there that would like to speak? There's one. Come on up. Last one. Yeah, right. Oh, that's all right.
Shane Han, inside city limits and Seward Public Employees Association representative and president. Again, I just, I know I'm sounding like a broken record here. I just really want to express my appreciation towards administration and, and their hard work towards, uh, this, uh, new collective bargaining agreement with, uh, the SPIA members and, uh, the, uh, collective bargaining unit itself. Also too, I want to extend that to the council. Uh, without, without, uh, you know, the councils supporting administrations, um, we, we wouldn't be nearly, um, as smooth. I just want to sort of express, um, uh, my, my, um, my, I guess, doings or associations with, um, training within the union, like she referenced, uh, APEA, that's Alaska Public Employees Association, sort of our parent union. Through the training here, I get to see a lot of the locals and I want to, I, I, more and more as I come away from some of a lot of those trainings and just different organizations or different, um, events, I start to realize how lucky we are in the situation we are with, like, you had mentioned that this is our fourth, um, edition of a, a CBA with the city, and that we are very, very fortunate. And I, as a president, I've always like wanted to reach into whether I have my communications with my, my members and with, uh, you know, administration and everything. I, I really want to ensure that it's not a conversation of us and them and more of a conversation about we. And I've always felt that, that support with administration and the council, um, as we sort of went through this process, um, and even leading, even, um, some of the processes that were taken, um, taken on last year. Um, and again, I just, I really want to, uh, uh, make sure that, that relationship is, is, I guess, fostered or whatever, um, and, and goes on and that we, you know, we keep this, this good, um, harmonious, um, working relationship together. And I think, uh, realistically, uh, we are very fortunate to be in that position to where a lot of the, um, public, uh, public sector, uh, unions and, and their employers are not necessary in that situation. So again, I thank you guys very much for that and the hard work. And, um, I look forward to, uh, seeing what, how this will benefit my, my bargaining unit. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, bring it to council and administration comments. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wrote a list of small things I wanted to, um, give shout-outs or thank yous to. I think, um, Rob had mentioned on the phone that we finalized some of the polar seafood lease, um, agreements, and you've seen those come before you. But I also wanted to give a big shout-out to Rob, Tony, the harbor master, and the public works director Doug for really tackling that issue head-on and, um, making a really good solution to, um, for that organization for the city as a whole. So thank you to those three. A big thank you to Danny and Courtney and P&amp;Z for all of our hard work on getting that sign code across the finish line. A big thank you to Councilmember Finch and to Councilmember Wells for your, uh, tenure on council. It's been great working for you, with you. Um, thank you for the work session earlier. And a pre-thank you to Jason, who will be manning the City Council without me next time as I go down to ICMA in Tampa. And thank you to, um, the union for the collective bargaining agreement. Those are my thank yous.
Mr. Pinkling?
Uh, I just want to say, um, thank you, Mr. Wells. Uh, it was, it's been, I know you're not going anywhere, but, uh, but it's, but it's been really great, uh, working with you, uh, in this, in this capacity. So, uh, yeah. Especially, I feel like I should say something like what a long-strength trip it's been.
Okay, Councilmember Kreitz. Councilmember Barnwell?
Uh, yeah, good meeting. Um, I appreciate the work session this afternoon or this evening with, uh, the electric department. Lots of neat stuff there. I just really appreciate, those guys are taking it out of the box all the time. They're very energetic and highly professional. So it's really nice to be in their hands and, and watch these guys work, um, feel confident in their abilities. Um, the police station was a good win tonight. I think everyone was happy with that, which was great. Um, that could have not, it could have gone the other way. So again, good work on the admin for setting this up. And the union, uh, agreement, that's great. And I'm glad Shane, you, you should take some credit there too because you've worked hard and you've been here in a lot of meetings. So thanks for all of your work. And then finally, Mr. Wells and Mr. Finch, um, it's been, it's been a great, it's been a great run. I know you've put, this guy's put a lot of work into this job. I don't think everyone realizes how much, uh, not everyone puts into this. Uh, but Mr. Wells really puts, uh, does his homework well. And, uh, he has been a very consistent and a solid person on this council. So thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Wells?
Well, didn't y'all just ruin what I was gonna say? Let me pull together. Thank you. I, you know, I learned so much over the last four years and made a lot of friends and came in completely wrong about how city government works. And I am grateful for anybody who sits up here and goes through this learning process. And I'm grateful to the, the new council members that'll be sitting up here and, uh, to the new council member who's never sat up here before, I guarantee that two years from now, everything you thought you knew when you ran, you were wrong. And you were gonna learn a lot about how things actually work. And, and, and the four years that I sat up here has changed... Sorry. Me for the rest of my...
Thank you, Randy. Vice Mayor of Singa.
I get to talk now?
You do. I'll back into you.
Okay, thank you, Brian and Taylor, for their update on our electric department. I, uh, capital improvements, meters, and different offers for our utility. I think it was very informative and, uh, and I do think that, um, making the effort to get any information, any and all information out to the people is important. And I believe, uh, that they are making the greatest effort to do that, or the city is, uh, is as a whole. So I believe that's a good thing. Thank you to Kevin Finch. Uh, he was definitely dedicated to his beliefs and I believe he was a good... He was definitely dedicated to his beliefs, and I believe he was a good person on this council. And Randy, I got a story about Randy. So I was working maintenance on a building right next to where he lived up there, and I am mowing the grass, and somebody's yelling me, yelling at me that I shouldn't be cutting the grass, and that the grass should be gone and taken out so I don't have to cut it anymore, and that was Randy. Yeah, I mean, it was a great idea, but I'm like, I can't, I'm not putting in all this grass. What's the matter with this guy? But it was a great thing. I met, I met him at that point, and I don't, we, it was great knowing him up there, he's a great man behind this council. You're knowledgeable, you're very smart, and you really do your research. I'll give you that. And it's been an honor to serve with you. I think that was it. Thank you.
Well, we accomplished a lot tonight. This was a big meeting. I am overwhelmed with, I'm humbled by the vote that I got from people. I especially want to give a shout-out to the group of folks I saw Sunday up at Mountain Haven when I went to do some music there, and they talked about how they voted for me with the special ballots and were very supportive and wanted to know everything that was going to happen tonight, you know? It's just, this was a perfect example of an election where every vote counts, and, you know, the people that forgot to vote or didn't bother to vote, I keep telling people that I've redlined them. Not really, but you know, it's your responsibility civically to vote, and that's one of the great things we can do. I have enjoyed, for quite a while now, sitting beside Randy, and we went to Juneau together. I got stories about that. It's been good to have you here. The incoming council member Calhoun, he sat right there, too, so he'll be off to the ends again, but, you know, these things go on. I think one of the good things we've done during my tenure, which has been pretty long, is instituting the three-year terms, because it does allow, it seems like a long time to serve, but it gets the new people through that two-year learning curve that pretty much everybody goes through. And some of them never, never learn, but most of them do, and it gives three years of continuity. So I, I also was looking back, and I think way in the way-back time, there was one mayor that served longer than the upcoming six years, which would be, you know, finishing up two, three-year terms. They went longer than that, so it's pretty unusual for somebody to last that long, because we didn't have three-year terms for a long time. Anyway, a lot happened tonight. I think it's a lot for people to process, and especially with the electrical department, the community meetings, everything that's going on, this transparency, this discussion, it's all good. We don't know where it's gonna end up, but at least people are being made more and more and more aware, and knowledge is power, so... Does anyone else have a final, final thing? Okay, a final, final thing. Vice Mayor Osenga.
I was going to ask, was our voter turnout to the city clerk, our voter turnout was, what, 23?
Twenty-three percent.
Is that, it seems to me that it's a high percentage of our voters.
Last year it was 19%.
Yes.
It was up over 400 vote, or the total votes were over 400, and last year it was like 350 or so.
Yeah, so that's good. I think that's a good turn, and I think if we keep that going and bringing those numbers, that'd be great. That was my honest.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:50. Thank you very much.